Is it usually bigger boxes?
All right, you all ready?
Ready as all over me.
All right. We'll go ahead and call to order the City of Lake Elmo Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. First item is to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we go to item two, just one item of business here. Commissioner Dean has resigned from the commission. We want to thank him for his time on the Planning Commission, which anybody listening in the audience are at home, that means we do have an opening available for everybody within the commission. That means our quorum is now three. Three is required for quorum. With that, item two is to approve this evening's agenda, which is approval of our minutes. Three public hearings, the new and unfinished business, wrapping up with some communication updates.
Move to approve the agenda for the November thirteenth meeting.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Siles, second by Commissioner Reese to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Third item is to approve the minutes from our previous meeting of October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Any edits, alterations, comments? Have a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes from October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, second by Commissioner Siles to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item four, again, we have three public hearings this evening. The first here is on the Royal Golf Conditional Use Permits and Variants. We'll hear from city staff, then applicant, and then we'll open up for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant for tonight's application is Royal Development Incorporated. The property is located just off of Twentieth Street. The property is currently zoned golf course community with a PUD overlay. And I will note, part of the parcel is also within the shoreline overlay. And it is guided in the city's comp plan as golf course. The property is the former three M Tartan Park and was redeveloped to include existing golf facilities in addition to single-family residential homes. There are three requests before you tonight. The first is for a clubhouse expansion, which is required from the PUD resolution in twenty seventeen. The second is for an outdoor recreation facility, CUP, for two pickleball courts. And the third is for a variance to increase impervious surface within the golf course community zoning district. So then I have some photos for you. The left is a schematic of the proposed CUP request. The blue box indicates the clubhouse expansion. The red box is the pickleball courts. And the right is an aerial image of where the site sits in relationship to the larger parcels and then the single-family homes. So diving deeper into the CUP request, the clubhouse CUP is for expanding their existing clubhouse facility. This facility was built back when the property was three M Tartan Park. The addition is going to include administration space, offices, a golf simulator for lessons, and a shelf for a restaurant facility. And again, a CUP is required per the twenty seventeen approval. The impervious surface added with this request is just over two thousand square feet. And the building area is fifty-four hundred, since it has a second level. Reviewing the pickleball CUP, their request is to, again, add two pickleball courts for membership use. The CUP is required for an outdoor recreation use in the GCC zoning district. So that is why you're seeing a CUP tonight. The proposal should not generate substantial traffic, although there are multiple access points for people traveling by vehicle or other modes of transportation. There are landscaping and netting proposed with the fencing to mitigate noise. And there's no lighting proposed with this request. The proposal would also add just shy of four thousand square feet of impervious surface. And breaking down the variance request, the golf course community zoning district requires thirty percent impervious surface. The property is a legal nonconformity at just around forty-six percent. And the applicant is proposing to increase that by about ten percent to fifty-six point one-three percent hardcover. The subject property is a little over ten acres, and it is surrounded by a pervious golf course, which is roughly one hundred eighty-two acres, according to the applicant's narrative. So when taken as a whole, the golf course's total impervious surface is far below the thirty percent threshold when taking it literally parcel by parcel, a variance is required. The function of the golf course requires, considering the whole set of parcels, the golf course parcels cannot function as intended without the clubhouse parcel and vice versa. And I would like to note that the variance is required in order for the conditional use permits to move forward, since they are adding impervious surface. The applicant has submitted a parking plan requesting a twenty percent parking reduction due to the membership resident use by the Royal Golf Course Community residents. The city code requires three hundred and seventy-five stalls for the uses within the site. The applicant is proposing to do three hundred and thirty-three. The applicant is not proposing to add or modify any existing parking, and there are currently three hundred and thirty-nine stalls. So with the twenty percent reduction, they don't need to amend parking. I will say, if the commission doesn't support the twenty percent request, they have indicated that they would be able to meet that by adding overflow parking to the maintenance parcel, which is just north. So with the approval of the variance and possibly the twenty percent parking reduction, the CUPs meet the city's twelve standard findings for CUP related to health, safety, welfare, compliant with the zoning district and comp plan, compatible with neighborhood and essential character. The CUPs would not be creating a hazard or nuisance, no additional public cost, no additional traffic congestion, and no impact to a major natural feature. And as you are all well aware, variances have four criteria that they must meet before they are reviewed for approval. The first of those is practical difficulties. The applicant has demonstrated that they meet practical difficulties. The lot is an existing legal nonconformity in terms of impervious surface and the unique barbell shape, which encloses the nonresidential activities in the golf course community. The GCC code does not differentiate between the residential and nonresidential or commercial uses of the zoning district in terms of impervious surface, although both are required to compose the golf course community. The applicant has proven that they meet unique circumstances. The subject property is the location for parking for the surrounding amenities. And as such, it is necessary for the subject property to contain greater impervious surface. The function of the golf course requires the whole set of parcels. Character locality should not be impacted. The property is surrounded by a pervious golf course, which the subject property provides parking and other amenities for. The overall impervious surface increase for the parcel holistically should not alter the essential character of the area. And then adjacent properties and traffic should also not be impacted, since the property is well buffered by green space and open golf course. So the application was sent out for agency review. We received the following comments. The watershed district indicated that no permit is required. The fire department provided their standard comments regarding drivelanes, parking, fire suppression, and fire alarms. The city engineer provided a comment regarding water main easements. The applicant has addressed this on the plan, so that condition is, or the comment is no longer relevant. The landscape architect provided comments on tree preservation and stormwater management. They also provided a comment in support of the variance request due to the surrounding green space. And the city staff has added a condition of approval regarding the applicant needing to address tree preservation plan comments. And the DNR did not provide a comment. Staff is recommending conditions of approval for each of the applications. The CUP for the clubhouse has five conditions of approval. The first is standard, stating that all necessary permits need to be obtained. The second is addressing the landscape architect memo. Third is that the addition is compatible with the existing design and composure of the existing clubhouse. The fourth is that any future expansion of the clubhouse would again require a CUP amendment. And the fifth is the twelve-month expiration, which is standard for conditional use permits. The pickleball CUP has four conditions of approval. The first is, again, that they need the necessary permits, addressing the landscape architect memo. The third is that any expansion of the courts, fencing, or adding lighting would trigger a CUP amendment. And lastly, that twelve-month expiration. And then the variance only has two conditions of approval. The first is what the variance is for, which is fifty-six point three-one percent impervious surface and the twelve-month expiration. So we did send this out for public hearing. We sent it out mailing on October twenty-eighth, and it was published in the local paper on November first. And we have not received any public comment at this time. And with that, I have three motions for you. Because the CUPs are contingent on the variance, that motion is to go first. And then I have the applicant here tonight, if you have any questions for them.
Perfect, thank you. One question just on the variance, or the CUP from twenty seventeen that guides the need for the variance on this. Has, we had other variance requests seeking impervious surface expansion since the twenty seventeen? I couldn't find any, but...
No, they added a pool and fitness center, and they had a variance for that lot, because it didn't have street frontage. But I'm not aware of any other impervious surface variances.
And then, I think you said this already, but if, couple years down the road, they want to expand again, that's still another variance, doesn't override anything from the twenty seventeen?
If they want to expand the clubhouse.
Further, yeah.
They would need a CUP amendment, and then they would also need a variance if they're adding impervious surface.
Okay, gotcha.
When you say that the overall impervious surface is down as a whole, is that taking into account the homes and the whole development? Is that where that's coming from?
I believe that was just reviewing the golf course parcels.
And I have a question about that. So there are separate parcels, the clubhouse, parking lot, pickleball courts, and the golf course. Is there, is that typical? I mean, is there a reason they're not considered one parcel for the same use? I mean, maybe, you know, that answer, but...
I don't know if I've, that, I wasn't here when they subdivided it, why it was like that. It's designed just the way the lot looks. I mean, it's really honing in on those, those commercial parcels. So maybe at the time, they were trying to limit expansion of that.
To me, if it was like one parcel, it's like, well, you've got tons of impervious surface. But if, you know, if there's separate parcels, then yeah, I can see the need for the variance.
I don't know that the city would want thirty percent hardcover over that. That's a lot of impervious surface.
Right, yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying.
Maybe why they did it at the time.
In my mind, if there's somewhere, you know, some way we could have language that's like, yes, this impervious surface for the clubhouse is okay, as long as the golf course stays impervious. And if somehow, some way they're ever separated, then that's rescinded. But I don't think we can do that, but just a thought.
Yeah.
Additional questions? Perfect. Does the applicant wish to speak?
No, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. This is a public hearing for anybody in the audience. Does anybody wish to speak on this? I don't know if you're, if the other items are not. Okay. Okay, it is still a public hearing, so we do need to have a motion to open and close. We'll entertain those now.
Move to open the public hearing. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Siles, second by Commissioner Reese to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Public hearing's open at six forty-three PM. Again, there were no public comments received, and nobody in the audience wishing to speak on this. And so we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, second by Commissioner Reese to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, and it's still six forty-three.
Nice.
With that, we'll move on to, oh, and when will this go to city council?
December third.
Okay, perfect. And you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave as well.
Would you like to vote on that?
It's a good call. I'm just, I'm just getting something.
Well, in the, in the, for expediency, I move to recommend approval of the Royal Development Impervious Surface Variance Request based on the findings of fact and conditions presented in the staff report. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Siles, second by Commissioner Reese to move to recommend the variance request. Any additional comments, gentlemen?
I think it's pretty straightforward. I mean, it makes sense, given that information. I think all of us do not want over more impervious surface than needed. But in this case, I mean, it's meeting within the realms, and I think it's good.
Yeah, I like, I like that the golf course can't exist without the clubhouse, and the clubhouse can't exist without the golf course. So they're kind of, to me, they go hand in hand, and there's plenty of impervious surface on the, on the golf course. So for that reason, I'm in favor of it.
I'd have to agree with the fact that I don't like the idea of more impervious surfaces. Love to see one of those porous concrete slabs, so that it's more pervious, but I can't control that. So as much as I don't want to see it, I can't argue with it.
Thanks, city staff outlined pretty well how it meets the characteristics that we need to it. In agreeance as well. So again, we have a motion on the table to recommend approval of the impervious surface variance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the first motion passes unanimously. We have two more there.
I move to recommend approval of the Royal Development Outdoor Athletic Facility Conditional Use Permit Request for Pickleball Courts Based on the Findings of Fact and Conditions Presented in the Staff Report. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Siles, second by Commissioner Reese. Again, anything additional to add?
Pickleball is the, is the rage right now, so everyone seems to want to have it. So it makes sense that they would add it here.
I love the fact that the Royal is continuing to improve rather than just staying stagnant. So appreciate that. I mean, it adds more amenities to our city, and I think it's a great, great idea, so.
All right. Again, that motion is to recommend approval for the pickleball courts. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. And finally, our third motion.
I move to recommend approval of the Royal Development Conditional Use Permit Request for the expansion of the clubhouse based on the findings of fact and conditions presented in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, second by Commissioner Siles to recommend approval of the CUP request for the expansion of the clubhouse. Additional comments, discussion?
I mean, follows that everything we've done, so.
Right.
Yeah, continue to make it better.
Correct.
Perfect. All right, again, voting to recommend approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. And now, this will go to the city council.
December third.
Perfect, thank you. And that concludes item four A for this evening. We'll move on to item four B, which again is another public hearing, this one on our landscape ordinance zoning text amendments.
Sophia, do I need to advance it, those slides? Okay, great. Well, thank you for taking the time to hear us out tonight. We, HKGI, have been in our role as the city's landscape architect for a little bit, under two years now. And in that time, we've had the opportunity to both review a lot of development plans and also inspect a lot of the existing developments that are happening in the community. As a result of that work, we have undertaken a number of changes to both the tree preservation and landscaping ordinance in an effort to yield a better tree and landscaping installation product for all of these new developments that are happening in the community. There are significant and repeated challenges that we're seeing pretty universally across most developments. And so what we're bringing forward to you today is our hope to get ahead of some of those issues and to put some more teeth in the ordinance to help us get healthy landscapes in the community. Oh, it's a Mac, and I don't know what I'm doing. Oh, yes, sorry. Apologies. That's my first day. All right, so summary, what we're here to talk about today is an amendment to the tree preservation ordinance, amendments to the landscaping ordinance, and then two supporting documents, the Minnesota Department of Transportation Standard Specifications and Details, and then the landscape inspection resources. So I'll walk you guys through each one of these individually. Please, if there are questions at any time, feel free to interrupt me, okay? So the tree preservation ordinance, we have this to preserve and protect, to the extent practical, the maximum number of significant and specimen trees within the community. Why, why do we have it? We want to protect our trees, they're valuable resources to the community, and they often take decades to replace, sometimes centuries, if you're talking about oaks or some of the other large mature trees. This is a continuation of the tree preservation oversight that we're already implementing for the plan review. So this is really an effort to put some more teeth behind the, in the field inspection work that we're now being asked to perform to ensure that the tree preservation that's happening on the development planning side is actually being implemented in the field. And then the third task is really to implement the tree preservation, or to integrate, sorry, the tree preservation ordinance with some of the DOT standards that we're bringing forward. I'm going to walk you through the, what we felt were the substantive changes to the code. There are a number of copy edit type changes in there as well that we felt like we could make, since we're already going through the amendment process to just kind of add some clarity. But this is really kind of the meat. So the changes clarify the purpose and reinforce that tree preservation is a requirement. There are two real operative statements in the, in the code section here that I've included, and that's best effort and maximum amount. So during our development plan review, we go from sketch plan all the way through built product. And we have a substantial degree of opportunity to save or to provide input to developers on tree preservation early in that process, and then guide that work or provide input to that work as we kind of move through the development plan review until we ultimately get to an approved plan. So our intent is to have some early intervention in the product, in the development plan review to ensure that we're identifying trees that we feel like can be preserved, given the intent of the development, instead of just bulldozing the whole thing and kind of starting from scratch. This also introduces the DOT's tree protection and preservation standards. The Minnesota Department of Transportation is, in our industry, is really viewed as a industry standard for tree preservation and for landscaping. And they're pretty close to universally familiar standards with most of the contractors that perform this type of work in the state, just given the amount of work that the DOT is contracting year to year. You know, nurseries and landscapers tend to follow those guidelines, because they want to be able to participate in those projects. So some of the specifics of those protection and preservation standards is guidance around watering, protection fencing, root cutting, drip line protection, and pruning. Inspection requirements and surety release. So I included this because we are going to inspect the tree protection before construction starts, and then we will continue to ensure that that tree protection remains in place until construction is complete. It's best practice to keep material storage, to keep equipment, and to keep traffic out of the drip line of trees. Even with the red snow fence, you would be surprised at how frequently that's not followed. And so part of our role now is to ensure to do spot checks and to ensure early on that those interventions are in place as they were shown in the approved development plan. Trees planted as part of the replacement fall under the same warranty as the landscaping requirements. So I, we've had a couple instances where there was some confusion about whether or not trees planted as part of the tree preservation were on a separate track. We just added some language to communicate that essentially all of landscaping, when it goes in as part of the development, is on the same warranty. And then just more some administrative language to better align with the state board's language around licensure for our profession, the landscape architects. I'm going to pause here to see if there are any questions on tree preservation before I move forward.
So just for clarity there, because I see under item C-ten, you strike out warranty requirement. It's still there under item E where we talked about? So that's, that's the indication there that everything's going under one.
Correct, and we, what we did was we moved both the warranty and financial security language in the same chunk of the code. So those two are pretty integral to one another. And we felt that taking the warranty specifics out of the tree preservation section and then moving it to the landscaping portion made the most sense, though, that we didn't have redundancies in the two sections. That way, it can be kind of confusing if it's in multiple spots. So say it once and say it as you intend it, is kind of the approach.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Landscaping ordinance. So the intent here is to clearly communicate city standards and inspection practices to increase installation success and long-term performance. We hate being the landscape police. It's not that I dislike the job, it's that it's really frustrating, because I think we all, at the end of the day, want a quality product in the ground. It's really a matter, in our opinion, of educating the contractors earlier on in the process. I think what we're finding is that developers are often hiring contractors on, and there isn't a lot of clarity in terms of what the community standards are that they are to follow. So they're coming in and performing these jobs as they would another project, and it's not aligning with the city standards. And so there's a disconnect in knowledge there. And our hope is, with the landscape ordinance revisions and then some of the supporting documentation, which I'll get into in a second, that we can catch them early before stuff goes in the ground and get ahead a lot of that stuff, so that ultimately we are able to do inspections and approvals with more ease and get better products in the ground long-term. All right, so the why. So some of this I already covered, but contractors aren't clearly understanding project requirements. Initial installations aren't being completed correctly, so they're not following the city's current planting details. Common problems with high levels of occurrence, so we're seeing the same problems over and over and over again, sometimes in the same development. Landscapes, landscaping isn't being watered or maintained adequately. And that's in the context of the city's watering restrictions. Developments are requiring multiple re-inspections. There are a number of developments this year alone where we've been out there two, three, four times to address issues. Warranty and inspection timeframes are admittedly unclear. And then the city standard details do not have supporting specifications. As a construction industry standard, and apologies if you guys already know this, but drawings and specifications work hand in glove to communicate the design intent. So drawings kind of show you the what and the where, and the specifications give you the standards that apply to those, to those drawings. So we were not able to, despite the fact there are specifications referenced in the city's current planting details, we were not able to find the city's landscaping specifications. We're fairly confident that they don't exist. And so we are suggesting that the city move to the DOT's planting details and the standard specifications, because everything is very thoroughly researched and backed by science. And it's also very well-integrated. So the details and the specifications are heavily reviewed and work hand in glove with one another with no gaps. All right, so the code amendments, the landscape section. Plans, installation, and inspection changes. We are... We are asking for some changes to the plan requirements to improve readability in the depiction of locations and types of landscaping. That's principally to support our inspections. And then that same item, the requirement for contextual information such as grading utilities and easements, that, that also goes to that same need, so we need to have accurate plans that depict not only the landscaping, but also the other contextual stuff so that we understand, you know, whether a tree might be in an easement, or if there are utility conflicts or other things like that. Standards installation and maintenance. So again, circling back to the DOT compliance, this just points the developer to the requirement to use the DOT standard planting details and specifications. There's a new requirement, and this, in our opinion, I think is gonna head off a lot of these issues, to have a pre-installation conference before any of the landscaping goes in the ground. We're gonna have a checklist that they have to review, we're gonna meet them on site, we're gonna review the landscaping material before it goes in the ground, and then they're gonna demonstrate to us that they know how to follow the planting details. They're gonna do some, some prototype installation for us that says, this is how we're gonna do it throughout the site. That way, when we come back and we find things that are incorrect, and they say, well, we didn't know, there's, there's no way around that. And then the, the landscaping checklist, I had, I touched on a little bit as well, so just ensuring that they've reviewed and understand the landscaping checklist. That checklist is really just a cheat sheet so that they understand all the different code requirements that they need to follow to gain acceptance. Acceptance is where we all want to be at the end of the inspection process. And then continuation, that same administrative change to the licensing language, and then a slight adjustment to the drainage and utility easements to not allow planting in or within five feet, that's really just to account for tree growth. So if we're putting stuff right on utility lines, especially in the case of evergreen trees, what you're gonna end up with is those goofy lopsided trees that have all the branches sheared off on one side. And it, it avoids any ambiguity about whether or not it's right on that easement line. Warranty and surety changes. A clarification that the warranty timeframe is at least two years. That it may extend if there is a failure to comply or perform any of the recommendations that come from our inspection work. The warranty begins and is complete only when all landscaping, all landscaping has reached acceptance. There's no partial acceptance, there's no partial surety release. We have encountered many, can we just wait and see, approaches to accepting landscaping, and typically what I will tell the contractor or the developer is, yes, you can wait and see, but your surety will not be released, and this project will not be accepted until the landscaping is brought to the standard that the community requires and that you agree to in the development agreement. Meeting landscape requirements includes responding to all replacement and correction recommendations for the landscaping. Often what we're seeing with our memorandums is that the replacements are being acted upon, but all the corrections are kind of being ignored, so just adding a little bit more forceful language behind both of those needing to be performed. Warranty and surety changes, just a continuation of that. So this is a pretty significant change. In the past, the city has asked us to do initial, perform initial inspections, inspections at the one-year mark, and inspections at the two-year mark. The challenge with that is the way the city holds the surety is there's a, I believe, a 75% release at that initial acceptance phase, and 25% at the final acceptance phase. So there, there is no leverage on that one-year mark, other than the development agreements' language and the code language, and so what we're finding is, it's just really get, difficult to get developers and contractors to consistently act on that one-year requirement, and it's not an industry standard. The, it's not typical to approach new construction that way. Typically, you do a punch list, so you get everything right at the beginning, and then you do a warranty check at the end, and whatever is failing is replaced. So we're recommending, again, in the interest of moving more towards a standard that the construction industry is familiar with, that we go with these two, the bookended approach. That's also gonna allow us to spend more time in that initial phase, which is really the crucial moment, right? So being out there, providing more oversight when this stuff is going in, is, in our opinion, gonna yield a better product i- in the end. And so if there are community concerns about landscaping in a specific community, that get voiced to city staff, we are certainly happy to come out and do an inspection and write, prepare a memo as needed to recommunicate the fact that maintenance needs to occur from initial acceptance all the way through the warranty period, but that will not be the standardized approach. And then the developers responsible for notification to the city that the work has been performed, that they have 60 days to perform that work. I believe the previous standard was 30 days, and there's some, some seasonality components with the DOT specifications and planting details. Typically, they, they have kind of bookended planting seasons to remove installation during that kind of dry summer stress period. Any questions on those revisions?
No, that's good.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna cover the DOT standards at a very high level. If you guys have any additional questions, happy to answer them here tonight or as a follow-up later on. So as I had stated before, we're recommending that the city shift to the DOT's planting standards and specifications because they're thoroughly researched, they're an industry standard, and they're integrated. Those are the principal reasons. And then I just included a kind of a sta, a sample page from those planting details, so they talk about planting timeframes, pruning processes, zones, soil preparation, and then there's a lot of additional supplementary information in the specifications. All right, this is the one I'm the most excited about, because I think it's gonna make a difference, and that's what I care about, that's what we care about. So the landscape inspections. Our intent is to establish a shared understanding and to ensure early compliance with community landscape requirements and standards. Nobody's happy when they have to come back out and reperform work. We hate it, staff hates it, and the contractor hates it. So this is an effort to make sure that we're all on the same page from day one. All right, so landscaping schedule. The before. So this is to ensure that the contractor and the developer are clear on these, these items. There are two acceptance milestones. Initial warranty start and final, the end of the warranty. Plant quality, installation, watering, and maintenance requirements all must be followed. Plant locations must be staked, reflecting the approved development plan. I would say almost universally, we go out and inspect developments that are some nowhere near planted as they were designed, and there are typically some adjustments in the field to avoid utilities or field changes, but we're seeing big changes that are being just kind of guessed at by contractors that don't really meet the intent to the, of the original landscaping plan. And to, you know, to replant 50 trees or to have some additional requirement for them to do some planting where it was intended to originally is a substantial heartache for the contractor, costs time, costs money, and often you end up with a poor product because now they're irritated, and so we wanna, we want things in the ground in the correct, correct location right from the start. And then just understanding what it's gonna take to obtain that initial acceptance and start the warranty clock so that they can get their first round of surety release. During, so ensuring the contractor and developer understand that multrings, weed control, planting corrections, watering, and other maintenance needs are ongoing requirements throughout the warranty period, not just the replacements. It's not just throw it in the ground and come back and replace it in two years when it's dead. It needs to look right from day one through day, or through year two. Erosion control and ground cover must be established and maintained continually. This is another pretty universal issue we're seeing where sod, seeding, prairie restoration will have tire tracks, will have huge areas of erosion, will often have damage from the replacement work that we've asked the contractor to do originally, where they don't come back and correct the skid steer marks or, or erosion that they've caused. So it's critical that they understand that it's not just the trees and the shrubs, it's everything on the ground that needs to be buttoned up before we can give them acceptance. And that all memo recommendations are required to address in the field landscape inspection findings. So just a quick rundown of the checklist. We cover schedule, we cover irrigation requirements. We'll get into this a little bit more. So typically, if they do not have a automated irrigation system in place, the requirement is that they need to submit a watering plan that says, here is the DOT's threshold identified in the specifications we just talked about, and here's how we are gonna meet those if we do not receive the rainfall that we think we're gonna get, you know, based on average weather patterns. Phasing, so this is an effort for some of the larger developments to be able to split the builder and developer landscaping into two chunks that can be inspected separately. That will start their warranty clocks on different timeframes, but it will not result in a surety release until both of those are initially accepted. Staking, we talked about a little bit. Tree stock, the opportunity for us to do in that pre-installation meeting, an inspection of the tree materials to understand, is it healthy? Is it in a nursery-quality form? So, you know, does it have a dominant leader? Does it have symmetry in the canopy? Is it free of disease? Is the, are the tree roots, you know, non-girdling, or is there a bunch of soil piled on top of the root mass that shouldn't be there? These are all things that we'll check for as part of that examination. And then the example installations that I talked about, just observing their crew do a couple of installations so that we're all on the same page of what the standard is. During and after installation, so again, irrigation and water, there must be a plan in place prior to landscape installation, or watering must be done on-site and scheduled. Watering is probably one of the biggest failure points for these new landscape installations. I don't know if you guys remember what the last three years of weather were like here, but it was the two driest years, followed by one of the wettest, and then a very unusual dry spell kind of at the end, right? So it's been difficult for them, I acknowledge that, but having a watering plan in place, I think is gonna help mitigate some of those issues, and it's also gonna ensure that they get paid to do watering. I, I can recall at least two instances, talking with contractors in developments, where I was told, we asked to water these, the developer refused to pay for. So again, if this is mandated in the code, and we have metrics by which we're actually measuring this, it's more enforceable, and we have something to point back to. Timing, this is taken out of the DOT requirements, so deciduous plantings can occur from April 7th to the June, to June 30th, and then again, from August 25th to November 1st. Evergreens is April 7th to May 17th, and then August 25th to September 15th. That's really an effort to avoid that hot, dry summer stretch. I will say, there are going to be some situations where we might allow a contractor to do some replacements in that interim period if we feel like they have a plan in place to keep the plants watered and, and, and reduce their stress, but the, the standard will be these timeframes. Preparation of as-built plans, so this just ensures the accuracy of installations and inspections. This is more of a, what's the word? We have this here just in case things, the staking process isn't followed. Ultimately, what we need is a plan that's accurate so that we can go out and inspect trees where they are. So this is putting the onus on the developer and the contractor to provide us with a plan that's accurate. And then the maintenance replacement and correction schedule requirement to be performed within 60 days. And then to close things out, just some information about warranty, the warranty schedule, so providing some more information about the initial acceptance requirements and timing, and then the final acceptance requirements and timing, just to ensure that they understand that the release of their financial security is contingent upon acceptance. I know this is a lot of redundancy, but we've, we want to over-communicate the expectations early on so that everybody's clear on what Lake Elmo's standard is moving forward. So I'll, I'll ask if there are any remaining questions, and then ask you to make a motion to approve.
Do we, so by adopting the Minnesota DOT landscape, are we looking at having city staff or individuals in the, in the city become certified landscape specialists through them?
I, that was actually a question that we had posed to staff. We have certified landscape specialists on staff. I used to have a certification, I unfortunately let mine lapse, but we're all very familiar with those standards. I do see some benefit to having the contracting side more familiar with that. We had bounced the thought back and forth of whether or not to make that a requirement. Ultimately, it felt a bit too constraining. But it might be a resource, honestly, that we can direct our development community to ahead of the actual construction portion of the project. You know, in our experience, we found that to get plans approved, developers are often amenable to some additional requirements beyond the development agreement, and so suggesting that their contractor has this certification is outside of the realm of possibility.
And then on the other one, because we've always talked about the two years, I like the wording of at least two years, is that, do you find that still to be sufficient enough, given, again, as you mentioned, kind of the chaos of the last?
I mean, you'd always like more, right? Two years is typically about as long as you're gonna get on a, a site work improvement that's like not, you know, utility or underground type. So that was really an effort to align with the DOT standards. Typically, one year is most common. So we felt having that second year aligns with the DOT's standard and maintains the current, current city standard. What we're seeing now in the community is some of these developments are into like year three or four, because they're just not meeting the requirements, and so we want to avoid that, too. That's too much demand on the contractor, and so we're really doing this to, to seek a balance, to get the thing in right correctly so at year two, we can come out, there's some minor corrections to be made, and we can all move on with a smile on our face.
That makes sense. And then the last thing, and this might be for city staff, in the amendment itself, item C, it looks like the numbers are duplicated for number one. It just says it gets written out of draft form, this just adds up. That's all the questions I had, anybody else?
Has this, similar plans been done in other cities, and if so, what is the success or not success?
The DOT?
Yeah, yeah.
Plans and specifications?
Yeah.
So what's the best way for me to answer this? It's very typical for roadway projects that have a state-funded portion. I don't know that we've seen it adopted by another community in the metro area, but to be frank, there's not a lot of planting standards out there in terms of specifications and details. We found that the fact that you guys have planting details- We found that the fact that you guys have planting details at all was something that I was, isn't common. You know, use the City of Maple Grove as an example, they don't have planting details in their standard specifications. So, but understanding that you guys are growing at the rate you're growing, you know, you're a community that's, you know, principally undeveloped, yet I think it's important to have a understood industry standard in place that communicates clearly and completely the requirements to get successful landscaping installed. We're using these because there's so much research behind it. The DOT's been refining these details for years and years and years to get a better product. And so that's ultimately why we default to these. We often use these in our own projects for municipalities and adapt them. So one thing I also forgot to mention is, we're also in the process right now of drafting a set of special provisions. Special provisions modify the DOT standards, so the standard details and the standard specifications. So if there is information in those details that doesn't fit the community, we can change that language without having to go through the full ordinance amendment process. It's more of a technical-facing document.
Okay, thank you.
What happens if you have not been in on a project from day one? But maybe they haven't even broke ground yet, or they just are. Do, can any of this, can you come in and, oops, help out with any of the final, or no, it has to be from day one?
Sophia, you might help me answer this one, but what I will say is, there's no reason we can't implement the checklist and the pre-installation requirement. I honestly think, and we've heard this from a number of contractors after our inspection work, is they wanted that.
Right.
And so I think we can implement that regardless of timing. I know just from a code implementation standpoint, and when this becomes effect, in effect, there's going to be some constraints there, and you could probably speak better to that than I can.
Yeah, so any development that has already been through the planning process, they have an approved landscape plan, that would proceed as-is. The code would apply to new projects, but HKGI and their checklist, the implementation revisions could be incorporated now, even if the project was approved prior.
What if there was like a subdivision that gets added on, so we, you know, the old plot was approved, and then there's a subdivision that gets approved later? Is that, does it still go under? Would that apply to this, or?
Each addition is required to have its, an independent landscape plan, so it would need to meet the code at the time.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Just some questions?
After the tree staking, is HKGI doing an inspection of the staking to?
Yes, we will review the staking to make sure it's accurate.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't see that language in here. Maybe I missed it, but it was, you know, the developer, the contractor.
Our intent would be to have that staking done as part of the, before the pre-installation conference, and we would perform that inspection at the time of the installation conference.
Same with the mockups for two types of trees and stuff.
Yep, yep.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Sophia, did we have any?
We did not.
Okay. So we'll need a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing at 7:23?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reeves, second by, oh, sorry, motion by Commissioner Stiles, second by Commissioner Reeves. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes, and the public hearing is now open at 7:23 PM. I was trying to delay it, trying to delay it. Did we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this one? Okay. So again, with nobody in the audience and no copies received beforehand, we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Aye, second.
Motion by Commissioner, Reeves, second, and by Commissioner Bullock to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is closed at 7:24. There's a motion on the screen there for us, we can entertain.
I recommend approval of the proposed text amendments as presented by city staff.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stiles, second by Commissioner Reeves, recommending approval. We'll open for discussion before taking a vote.
I think this is good. I think, just looking in our development, there was questions, and this answers some of those questions. It's clearly defined, and I do think it'll put the developers in not on notice, but let them know where, what the plans are. I think before it was kind of wishy-washy, and so I think this clears up that wishy-washiness.
As a resident of the City of Lake Elmo, I think this is awesome. Thanks for being the landscape police. I've seen it happen in my backyard.
Happy to do it.
It just keeps getting better, so I appreciate that. As a developer and contractor by day, I think this is really stringent. So we don't see something this, you know, robust every day. However, I do appreciate the fact that it's going to be upfront, you know, it's going to be in the, in the landscape review, it's going to be, have a pre-construction meeting. I would encourage the fact that when we're, when you are reviewing the plans, making sure that the landscape architects for the developers and the contractors are putting all of these requirements right on the drawings, so that when the contractor buys the landscaping package, the landscapers have that all included, too. So the more things that can be communicated every level down, the easier it is, you know? The money's there then if it's bought out right away, instead of like, oh, this needs a two-year warranty, well, that's this much more money. So I do really appreciate how upfront everything is going to be. So I think this is great. Thanks for, I liked your presentation, too. The examples of all the crappy installations were great. I liked that, so.
As everyone knows, everyone here knows, I am the one that's always begging for tree preservation, so I loved this. And I also just, everybody being on the same page from day one, catch any problems early, it just alleviates a lot of headaches later, so.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. The way I look at this is it provides mass, mass in the sense of an acronym, where it provides a more measured approach for how we're going to be doing landscaping in the city, keeps people accountable, it's scalable, so as the city continues to grow, but then also, most importantly, there's sustainability put behind it. So I'm in favor of this recommendation. Do we have any further discussion? We'll go and take a vote then. Again, it's to recommend approval of the proposed text amendments as presented by city staff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, and this one will go to city council, also on the 3rd?
December 3rd.
December 3rd? Perfect.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate it.
That concludes item 4B for this evening. We'll move on to item 4C. This is our last public hearing for this evening, it's the capital improvements plan.
It's on the desktop.
It's not open. Where'd you put it?
Right-hand, second one down.
There it is, thank you. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Clarissa Hadler, I'm the Finance Director for the city here. I will be reviewing the 2025 to 2034 Capital Improvement Program slash CIP. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay. This is, of course, a very quick summary, there's a 180-page report in your packet with lots of details, so. We're just going to start with what a capital improvement program actually is. So a CIP is a multi-year capital expenditure plan for a city's infrastructure, streets, parks, and utility systems, as well as vehicles, equipment, and public buildings. Last year, Lake Elmo moved from a five-year CIP to a 10-year CIP, so if you guys are here for a few years, you will likely see this plan continue to grow. So we're just really getting a much better idea of what our long-term needs are for the city. The Minnesota Land Planning Act requires that the implementation plan, portion of the comprehensive plan, include a CIP for major infrastructure needs for a five-year period. Again, we have gone to a 10-year period. Our CIP includes capital projects that cost at least $25,000 and have a useful lifespan of five years or longer. The CIP outlines the various funding sources and priorities of each project. So some of our funding sources are debt issuance, special assessments, various existing funds throughout the city, municipal state aid, and grants and donations. And then each plan, or each project is ranked by priority. Those priorities can, of course, change year to year. So our 2025 through 34 CIP includes 149 projects totaling about $162 million. If you look at our pie chart here, the dark red, the, there's actually bright red building is so small, it, you can't see it in the pie chart. And then the orange, those are admin, building, and fire. And then the vast majority, everything from the light yellow all the way around to the blue, are public works-type projects. And we'll get into more of that in a little bit here. So admin and finance has just a couple of projects. The city council is looking at a land purchase at the moment, and then my department is in need of some more advanced financial software, which will be building in some efficiencies within our department. The building department just has four vehicles that they replace on a seven-year replacement schedule, and then the fire department has lots of very large, very expensive trucks and equipment. So the public works departments are broken down, so there's the general public works department, which is streets and general maintenance, parks, water, sewer, and stormwater. And for the purposes of this report and for this evening, I've broken those public works project types into four groups, vehicles and equipment, the public works building, parks and trails, and then infrastructure. Infrastructure then is further broken down by streets, water, sewer, and stormwater. Really quick, again, in the pie chart, you'll notice vehicles and equipment, the parks building, parks and trails, these are all these slivers up here, and then the infrastructure projects go from orange, and again, all the way up through dark green. So by far, infrastructure is our largest investments. Vehicles and equipment has 31 items totaling $3.5 million, and those are funded typically from trade-ins, the vehicle replacement fund, general fund, and the water fund. Public works building, this is brand-new this year, as we're starting to add projects for that public works building over on Ideal Avenue, does that sound right, everyone? So currently, it just has five projects totaling $310,000. I will also add at this time, this building. So this building is brand-new, we haven't started the CIP on this building, that's going to be one of our big projects for next year, so that's kind of this, like, continuing to add to this list. Parks and Trails has 29 projects totaling just under $5 million. Projects are reviewed and adopted by the Parks Commission annually, and includes anything from playground equipment replacements, trail and park additions, and pavilion replacements. And then getting into infrastructure, so again, vast majority of our expenditures, capital expenditures come from infrastructure. 69 projects totaling around $150 million, and largely within streets and water. Street projects include city projects, annual reconstruction, as well as county projects with city cost share. Water projects include some water treatment plants to address PFAS, those will be funded by MPCA, the 3M settlement funds. And it also includes the water portion of street reconstruction, so as you're reviewing the CIP, you'll actually see, like, Public Works Project 101 matches up with Water Project 101, so there's the street project side of it and the water project side of it. And then well, pump, and tower maintenance. Continuing with infrastructure, we have sewer projects, including the sewer portion of street reconstructions, as well as some sewer oversizing, which happens during developments. And then stormwater projects include some regional drainage improvements, as well as stormwater reuse projects. So our next steps are to hold the public hearing. Happy to have any discussion, answer any questions, and then I would ask that you make a recommendation to the city council on the compatibility with the comprehensive plan, and then this does get adopted by the council in December. And there's your motion.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have any questions for Clarissa, right?
Clarissa, yes.
What's the vehicle for budgeting a lot of these sewer, water, street projects over the next 10 years?
When you say vehicle?
So is it, are we, are we relying on, like, engineers to give us, you know, kind of some cost projections for, you know, what we need to budget for some of these projects that we'd like to do, I assume? I mean, now, public works has?
Correct, yes, the city engineer provides a list, his list. All of the department heads provide their lists to us, and we just input it into the software. So the city engineer reviews his sort of ongoing plan, he'll readjust it depending on whatever's happening, so we've made a lot of changes this year, and actually, some of the projects that are listed in water are currently sort of up in the air. We're not really sure what's going to happen with those because of the funding. It looks like we should probably take him out, I just didn't want to right away until we knew for sure. But yes, he does provide all of that information.
And I guess this is probably a bigger question for, than for this group, but is there any talk of a City of Lake Elmo police force that we should begin to budget for at all? Maybe you don't know that answer at all, but I see the fire department on here, and I'm like, well, this is a 10-year plan, we're growing, just didn't know if that was talked about also. Maybe that's, that's a question for another time, I guess.
One of the things I remember this brought up, there was a few questions around, does it make sense to go from the five to the 10-year plan? It was one of your earlier bullet points, said we are getting better visibility, that's true, we're seeing, okay.
Yes, absolutely. And the, 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 the good and the bad part of having the plan is you know what you're needing to fund, right? And so then you have to come up for the money, with the money for it. So it has been very eye-opening to go to the 10-year, and then, and, you know, our software, we're essentially inventorying, so we know sort of behind the scenes what's coming even after that 10 years. It's just for these purposes we presented for that 10-year period.
Is that $2 million-plus fund for the fire department, is that ladder one replacement? I think it was like in 2034, but it was like a $2 million expenditure? I'm assuming that's for the main ladder truck?
That sounds correct.
In the wrong business.
I'll have to look.
I need to sell fire trucks.
With the 10-year, now, this is very basic question, but with the 10-year plan, then, does that allow you to, when you're seeing some of the, I'm going to take a real small thing, like the parks that need to be improved, does that allow you a better scope of, okay, so maybe when a subdivision comes to, before us, and they choose not to put a park in, they choose the dollar amount instead, does this better able, is this easier to look at to say, ooh, maybe we need to increase those rates? You know, that's a very small example, but something like that with a 10-year plan, is that easier to say, ooh, we're going to have to start increasing some things here and there?
I think so. You know, the more that we have sort of this, you know, asset inventory, which is really what we're building here, it's a, it's a, it's an investment plan, but it's also an inventory of what we have that we're building out, and so part of our analysis has been, you know, what is the, and I think actually, there might be a report in there regarding sort of the, the 10-year funding of the park dedication fund. So we have the vehicle replacement fund, and we've got that mapped out for 10 years. There's a park dedication fund, so we know, based on some, you know, very educated guesses by Sophia and Jason about, you know, what our development looks like. Obviously, that can change with the market and?
Oh, without doubt. I just wondered if that made it easier to say, oh, yeah, we are going to need to increase this or whatever, because you're looking at it big, big shit.
Yeah, and actually, so our software that we use for this even upgraded this year, and has provided some more tools for that exactly, and some better reporting, and that's been great, too.
Oh, good.
That kind of brings up a good question, like, do we ever think about having, pushing developers to have a preference of doing a park dedication fund versus?
In the city's comp plan, we have park search areas, so if they're within that, usually we recommend land, but the 10-year plan does help us think about it more realistically. I mean, we love land everywhere, but you also want quality land.
Services as well, yeah, okay. Makes sense to me. Do we have any questions? This is a public hearing, so again, we'll need to, motions to open and close.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, second by Commissioner Reeves to open the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes, and the public hearing is open at 7:39 PM. Take it, there's nobody in the audience rushing the stage, and no digital comments either, so we can entertain a motion to close.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stiles, second by Commissioner Reeves to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes, and the public hearing is now closed at 7:40 PM. We have a motion on our screens there for commissioners.
I move to recommend to the city council that the 2025 to 2034 Capital Improvement Program is consistent with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bullock, second by Commissioner Reeves to recommend approval of the CIP. Discussion points?
A lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
I think a lot. So thanks for, thanks for all the work that you've done for this. I mean, it's, there's a lot there. And it's important that we try to get our budgets as, as close as we possibly can. And I like, I like the 10-year plan rather than just the five-year plan too, so. Thanks for all the work that you've done on this.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that the confidence is still high on the 10-year, because it gives a better, better planning.
I agree. Oh, that's really strange to say 2034.
Additional comments? All right, hearing none. Again, motion on the table is to recommend to the city council that the 2025, 20 through 2034 Capital Improvement Program is consistent with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. This is again, I'm assuming, December 3rd to city council, or?
This is actually December 17th, is it? What is that? Whenever?
The next, the second one, the second one.
Perfect. Later in December.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes item 4 for this evening. We'll move on to item 5, which is the 2025 Planning Commission Work Plan.
Alrighty, so we are looking at the 2025 Planning Commission Work Plan. Planning Commission has a work plan every year, so I'm going to just start off refreshing, refreshing you with the 2024 plan. You guys checked off a lot of items this year. The Planning Commission reviewed the housekeeping amendments back in February. The Planning Commission reviewed the city sign ordinance, and that was adopted in August. The OPPUD ordinance amendments were done in October. You looked at the CIP about five minutes ago. Planning Commission had training in May. The Planning Commission was able to get to two joint workshops. One was in February, the other one was just yesterday. We streamlined and improved policies and procedures with new staff hire. The community development department is, as of today, fully staffed, so that is an accomplishment. We transitioned from permit works to cloud permit, which has a planning module within it. We created educational materials on upcoming developments back in January, and we've been updating that quarterly that lives on the city's website. And then the last three zoning map amendments, code amendments, and comp plan amendments. You process those when applicants submit applications. So then staff drafted the 2025 work plan, again, using the same formatting with priority levels and the four planned sections. The items circled, the bullet points that are circled are newly added items, and the underlined is adjusted existing items. So the first one is reviewing housekeeping amendments that staff identified in 2024. The, a new item is reviewing and implementing cannabis regulations. Another new item is reviewing the city's Old Village area zoning map and future land use map in relationship to that study we completed earlier this year. We're leaving the CIP on there. The provide annual planning commission training, that line should actually move down to hold annual joint planning commission and city council work sessions. I bumped that back to annual. You guys are welcome to change it. It just seemed a little bit more realistic with how things went this year. And then new item is promoting sustainability through Gold Leaf, B3, and Greenstep programs. Implement an interactive city map for residents. City staff feels a lot of calls from residents asking about zoning, utilities, all that good stuff. So it'd be nice to have an interactive map where people can search their own, own parcels. And then I've left the, the same three at the bottom. Again, those are processed when applications come in. And so again, from the Planning Commission tonight, we're looking to see if there's any changes, items you want to add, or priority levels you'd like to change. And then again, you do have a joint workshop with city council in February. So other than the work plan, is there anything else the commission would like to discuss with them? So I'll bump it back to here. If there's any questions or ideas.
Questions?
I can't think of anything that we need to hone in on. I mean, water is always the hot topic, but that is, that's getting beaten to death, I guess. But, or beaten to clean water, I guess I should say. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know if any of you have something that we should address during a joint meeting.
Having the Old Village stuff in there is great to have. I think Commissioner Ray Camp might be upset there's not a discussion on crosswalks.
Yeah, how we get across to our board, so. But he's not here.
They can bring that up at the, at the workshop.
Yeah, it's a workshop. Well, it'd be nice if we knew before the workshop. Can you tell me a little bit more about the sustainability through Gold Leaf, B3, and Greenstep? So is it going to be something that we're going to implement into development agreements, or just encourage the use of them?
Part of this plan is, is where staff is spending their, their time. So as long as the Planning Commission is supportive of this mission, staff would be spending time implementing that. There's different events that you could host. It could be development requirements. There's array of, an array of items you could use to achieve these, these awards.
Okay. Is Greenstep the award that you had accepted earlier this year?
Correct. We're at four, we got all the way to the fifth step, but then every year you can re-qualify for the fifth step. Gold Leaf is a new program that was implemented or rolled out last year. So we're one of, I think we're like one of 30 cities that have expressed interest in it. And then B3 is our monitoring for utilities and meter usage.
I really like the interactive city map for residents, and probably also for developers too, because I'm sure you get a lot of calls from developers, like, hey, what's this zone, and what can I try to put here? So I think that would be a really useful feature on the city's website.
Yeah. I can't think of anything additional. Things to add.
I like it.
We like all the priority levels.
Is the, I mean, the cannabis regulations is in progress, and it's, I feel like that, I mean, it's already in progress, but I feel like with the oncoming state regulations, that it's probably going to be a pretty important hot topic for us to get our arms around. Even though I didn't show up to the workshop yesterday, so.
It was, I learned a lot. Holy cow, it's amazing, yeah. It was, I enjoyed the joint with the city council for things like that. So if there's ever a topic such as that, where we kind of have to learn as we go, could that be like just brought up at another time, like we say, you know, hey, the, you know, ice cream man is coming to town, and it's going to require all this kind of stuff, maybe the two of you should get together? Can that just kind of be an on-the-fly thing, if something like that comes up?
Yep, I think annual is a baseline. You can always do more than that.
Okay, yeah, okay. I guess the only thing in priority level with the Old Village being a four, what's the reasoning for that one? Is it just because we're kind of still waiting on the study?
Part of it is the amount of staff time it'll take. The other part is you're also contingent on Met Council, Met Council's timeline and approval. So usually one, priority level one, two, kind of in three is what staff can do, like, on their own very quickly. And then three, four, five is.
There's other dependencies.
It has other parties at play.
Makes sense. Anything else? There, there's a motion for this one.
I move to recommend approval of the 2025 Planning Commission Work Plan as presented by staff.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, second by Commissioner Reeves to recommend approval of the 2025 Planning Commission Work Plan. Any additional commentary?
I appreciate the fact that you are constantly, I feel like you are constantly looking at it. And, you know, it's in the forefront of your mind, so I feel like I'm taking your recommendation, because you're in the trenches and you know. So I support you, and thank you for all your hard work. I love you.
I don't have any additional comments.
Perfect. All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Again, the motion is to recommend approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sophia. That's item 5. Last is item 6, the communication updates.
I will just stay up here. So November 6th, the city council approved the Lake Elmo Elementary subdivision variance and conditional use permit. And then just yesterday, the city council held that joint workshop with Planning Commission to discuss cannabis. And cannabis, the draft ordinance is what you will be reviewing at your November, November 25th meeting. And upcoming meetings, November 25th, you're going to be talking about cannabis, and then December 9th.
Will you talk about cannabis then too, or?
I don't think so.
Let's hope not.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you very much. That takes us to the end of our agenda for this evening, as we'll be able to adjourn. Again, as always, thanks to city staff for hanging out and preparing, doing all the work for us. Commissioners, thanks for taking time out of your evening as well. And with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:50 PM. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
That was.
That was good.
That was, we're done.
So you guys have nothing else you want to talk about? It's going to be a pretty quick workshop. I'm okay with that, but.
Sorry.
You're, you guys aren't going to be here. Anything you guys want to talk about?
They gave up. That's why I was trying to think of like something we should talk about, but.
Well, it's your time now. We're passing the.
Also had time.
We're passing the reins to the younger.
A popular one we talk about is commissioner retention. I don't know if you guys are interested in that again, but.
We did that, what, two years ago, or is it a year before?
Yeah.
I mean, if you start paying again. I mean, that was. You guys haven't got paid yet?
We'll make it a short workshop then.